Yeah, great, great. Thank you. So as I said, our focus is really specific today. We're going to focus on 2021. And our intention, just so that we can all hold it, is that we complete by one o'clock. I know that several of you might have appointments afterwards. So we're really moving to that, to that point. We will take breaks probably every hour and a half or so. If by chance you are dying for one, just say something, okay? And we can all accommodate. That's not a problem. So we're just going to jump in. What I did do is I took the pleasure of reorganizing our priorities list. So I want to show it to you and get your thoughts on, is it accurate? The order in which you'd like to discuss these topics today? Take a quick look. I think budget projections were at the top of the list for Andrea to kick us off. Affordable housing, capital projects, development, noise ordinance, tree ordinance, communication strategy.
Which can be two components, by the way.
It feels like part of communication might be something around the audit, which is already in process, but also more about the communication loop and what you mentioned yesterday, Andrea, with the fellow coming in.
Question, where did the neighborhood planning unit? Where did the neighborhood plan? Line item, we had that in a conversation yesterday and said we were going to flesh that out. Where would we have parked that?
We would have parked it after. It is, you're right. It's not listed here, but it is parked. Whoops, it's parked afterwards.
You know, it may be something I can tease out of the affordable housing line item as well, which also ties into the development on number four.
Okay, so put it up with around number four? Okay.
I think it can organically come out of those conversations. So let's just see how that goes.
Great, great. And I do, I will in a moment transfer us over to the sheet where I take notes and it is listed on there.
Okay.
What happened to downtown master plan?
Downtown, you know what? I looked at this list and I wondered the same question. Is that something that falls in development or is it to be separate?
Separate.
I don't know if we need to talk about it much. I mean, my understanding is that it's in the queue and ready to go. But it concerns me if I, maybe it was a party last year and then not to see it here.
All right. Okay, so how about we put it at number four, 4B between four?
That'll work for me. Thank you.
All right.
Good. And just to be clear, I mean, we have it captured from, from yesterday. As I like George said, it's in the queue. I think we discussed, you know, the timing, you know, how it dovetails from the strategic plan. But if there's anything else that needs to be just discussed that we haven't discussed about it, then today would be the opportunity. But otherwise, it's, it's on the work plan.
Okay, do not conflate this with the work plan, is what you're saying.
This is not, that's correct.
Yes.
This is things that we need to, we still need to discuss.
Okay. And then just, I missed the transportation plan, 2021 priorities. Was that, I know I left a little early. Was that the conversation we're having about the signalization investor in safety? Or was it beyond that?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, this, this was in the feedback from, from Kelly's email. I mean, this was from the, from the commissioners. So no, this was not up here. This is not related to the conversation yesterday.
Thank you.
All right, if we can just then reset, and this is not the work plan discussion, how are we allocating time for that this morning?
Is anybody here who could say?
Say that again, Kelly, Commissioner Kelly?
I understand that this list is not our work plan discussion. So then how are we allocating our time to get to that work plan today? Where does that fit in?
Well, well, here, here's where we're going to go. I'm just going to share another screen. We are working towards the work plan. So everything that was on the 2021 list, I've got captured here. And I'll, I'll make sure we add downtown master plan as a separate line item. If these are prioritized from our conversation yesterday, we're just going to plow through. I think the purpose of prioritizing them was to make sure that the ones towards the top were things that you all needed a decision on versus things at, towards the bottom of the list were, were more for discussion. And then everything turns into the work plan. So if there's something that's not listed here that you want to be on the work plan that isn't, feel free to let me know. So basically, if there's something that we didn't discuss yesterday and isn't on the list today, then that needs to be put on the table as soon as possible.
I also have a comment. Would it be helpful to overlay the things from 2020 that are rolling into 2021 with timelines? So that we have a picture of sort of where we are in 2021? So we don't add more stuff to 2021 where we were already committed to 2021?
Probably yes. So one of the things that you'll notice on this particular page that says 2021 City of Decatur priorities, whatever we talked about yesterday that had a move forward element to it or continuation element to it, I have listed in this document. And you'll see some of the copy points. So for example, Kelly had asked about the Neighborhood Planning Committee. Where did that go? So it's, it's still on this list if you all want it on this list. That's why I have it highlighted so you can tell me yea or nay. But it is there. So other things, for example, capital projects and prioritization. We had talked about Eppster Field and considering it for the 2021 budget. That was again, something we moved over from 20 to 2021. So hopefully I've captured most everything that's moved over. As we go through these line by line, I would love for you all to discuss what needs to be discussed in terms of status or what you'd like to see completed in 2021. And then I will capture exactly what that is and the timing for it. So first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter. And if I have something captured here that does not make sense, just let me know. Feel free to correct me in, at any point in time.
And this document has legs. This is the one I recognize that walks us through the year and into next year, depending on what doesn't get done and it's what gets picked up and discussed again. So now that I see that, that's helpful.
Correct. And if we just need to see what we do yesterday, it's all down here. This is everything from 2020, so we can easily go back and forth. All right, so are you ready to start?
Yes, Kelly, we are ready to start. Okay, I'll, I'll calm down the excitement.
No need. Andrea, I'm going to turn it over to you to start our conversation about budget projections and limiting to 2021.
Yeah, leave it to me to calm down the excitement, to talk about budget. So I don't plan to go into a whole lot of detail, but you know, happy to answer questions along the way. I just felt like, you know, here we are midway through the fiscal year. And if y'all are anything like me, just wondering exactly, you know, where, you know, where we are today and compared to where we thought we were going to be. I will say when the budget was developed and adopted back in June, you may recall that, you know, the budget did anticipate a fairly grim six months. And then anticipated some things coming back to more normal in the first part of this year. And I, I do believe that that's not necessarily going to be the case. And specifically, I'm referencing active living programming. And so the revenue that we anticipated from active living, I do not believe will, will come to fruition. And there are a couple of other key categories. So let me just start with the, the big picture of looking at the revenues. And just so you know, I'm, at this point, I'm just looking at the general fund. I've done a cursory review of the Capital Improvements Fund, but primarily spent time earlier this week in the, the general fund. So in terms of revenues, we, we currently have budgeted just over $28 million that we anticipate in this fiscal year. And after reviewing every revenue line item, and there are some that it's, it's premature to, to really make an estimate about, but very, very conservatively, I, I have, I anticipate that that revised number may come down another $500,000 to $700,000. So less than a million dollars. And the primary reason that I have some confidence in saying that is that it looks like our real property tax revenue, which is close to, close to $18 million. So when we're talking about a $27, $28 million budget, close to $18 million is real property tax. And it looks like that number is going to stay the same or actually be slightly increased. Part of that is just the way we, we budgeted back in June. I budgeted a, a lower billing amount and, and actually a conservative collection rates. And so the billing was a little bit higher because the digest came in a little bit higher, just a couple of percentage points higher. And this is even with very conservative collection rates, 90% and 93%. We were at 93% for the end of FY 1920. That's low for us, but, but it's also, you know, to be expected right now. So with all that said, I think we're going to hit and actually might be a little bit over our estimate for real property taxes. So that's what, that's what's going to keep us extremely stable. And then unexpected to me, our building permits. We are, we're going to run, and again, this is conservatively. We may be $500,000 higher than what we estimated with building permits. And so instead of around $600,000, we'll be over a billion dollars in revenue from building permits. But that will be completely offset with, with parking fees. I mean, I think I mentioned this in a previous meeting. But we're just not, we're not getting revenue from parking. And so that, that budget will be, that will take probably a $500,000 hit. Revenues from, for recreation, even though we did adjust those downward, will still probably be off somewhere between 150 and 200 with recreation fees. You know, assuming that, that we are just kind of staying the course with the activities that we have now. Code violations, these are court fines and fees. That's also down dramatically. I mean, we're not having court at the moment, even though that will be getting, coming back online in a virtual capacity will be very limited in the number, starting out with the number of cases that will be heard. So there may be some room for movement there. And then from there, you know, the numbers drop off pretty dramatically, just in terms of the size of each of the revenues. And so I, I say all that, I think that's actually a positive, a very positive picture. Because on the flip side, I, you know, I would anticipate that we're not going, you know, we are not going to spend 100% of what's been budgeted for expenditures. We are, we're meeting as a team next Tuesday, a team of department heads to go over each department's expenditure estimates. But there are so many projects that either, you know, have been delayed, delayed, deferred. Of course, there's been no, no business travel, just a number, number of expenses that just aren't, aren't taking place. So I do anticipate that we'll have some savings with our, with our expenditures as well. So, so I would anticipate that, that we'll probably end up using close to the amount of fund balance that we, that we budgeted originally, about $2.2 million. You know, we may need to draw down a little bit more of that. That's possible. But the nice thing is, as you recall, back in 1920, you know, we had budgeted to use over a million dollars in fund balance. And we added two and a half million dollars to fund balance. So that leaves us at 12 and a half million dollars in fund balance. And so what I anticipate is in the current fiscal year, we'll be using, you know, well over $2 million. You know, it's possible that could go into the next fiscal year. And then I would anticipate, you know, revenues and expenditures, you know, leveling off or at least revenues coming back to, you know, previous, previous amounts and, and no longer having the reliance on fund balance. But even for another, you know, we have another two years if we need to, you know, carefully dip into the fund balance. But just to remember that the recommendations, if we're, if we're recommending to use the fund balance, it is going to be for, you know, one-time, non-recurring expenses. The planning processes, you know, that we have, we have in the queue. You know, those are very, you know, appropriate ways to use fund balance. And of course, we had, you know, a brief conversation about capital yesterday. We actually, you know, we ended up, we, we, we thought we were going to have at the end of last year around, you know, three and a half million dollars in fund balance. And we ended up closer to $7 million in fund balance. So that's going to give us some options. And when we had the conversation about capital projects and those capital projects that are in the queue, I think we'll have some flexibility to, to address those. So I'm, I would say I am definitely, I'm cautiously optimistic. You know, there's still, you know, we're, you know, the, the taxes, the, the second installment of 2020, those taxes were due December 20th. And so a lot of the, that hasn't been, hasn't been posted and I haven't seen those reports. So I'll have a much clearer picture in the next, you know, 30 to 45 days about where we really are falling out. But I feel confident, even with a conservative collection rate, that we're going to be real close to that, that number. So that, that stability is, it's really important. And then one more revenue category, SPOST. You know, we have a separate account, a separate fund where we, where we account for the, the SPOST revenue, the sales tax revenue. And, and we have, and that's, we've, we've borrowed, we have a really, you know, a SPOST bond. And that's for the Atlanta Avenue project. And as well as anything that's left over, you know, and that, in that account is dedicated to, to transportation sidewalks, pedestrian improvements. And I was really concerned about what was going to happen with SPOST, with the economic impact of the pandemic. And I'm actually seeing those numbers go up. And even in the, what I'm anticipating in the current year is that that budget will increase by about $600,000. And I'm, I'm pretty sure, even though I can't get, or have difficulty getting any kind of detailed information from the state, I suspect it's just because, you know, back in the summer, internet, internet sales began to be taxed and we started receiving that revenue. So, so I think just as we were seeing kind of our other, you know, other sources go down, the internet sales came in and that's, that's pulled us up. And that's going to keep the SPOST fund very solvent. So, so I think it's, it's, and like I said, cautiously optimistic. I think we just, we need to continue with our, our conservative approach to budgeting. And, and like we always do, you know, never, you know, never take a gamble. You know, we don't, we don't, you know, budget hoping that the revenue will come in. You know, we, you know, we, our approach to budgeting is, is based on, you know, on what we're confident in. And again, when, when things come in, you know, better than anticipated, we make adjustments later, later in the year normally with the revised budget. So I'll be glad to answer any, any questions that you all may have. But hopefully you hear that it's overall, it's a, I think we're in a positive spot. And while we didn't have, we did not have a crystal ball back in, back in June. And that's evident with a couple of the categories where I, I missed the mark. But I feel like we, the, the approach that we took and have continued to take is, is serving as well and is going to allow us to, to move forward with many, if not all of these projects that we discussed yesterday and will discuss today.
Great. Questions, comments? Thank you, Andrea.
Couple of questions, Andrea. Thanks again for this information. Are we coming through year four of SPOST that was passed in 2017? And then have two more years of a six-year term on that? And we, 2018 would have been year one, I think?
Right. We've got, the last year will be 23, 24. There, there'll be nine months of, of tax collected in 23, 24.
And we, we experienced what was something like a million dollar shortcoming estimate based on what we were told that it would be? If I understand, like last year? So then does this increase of the 600,000? Is that normalizing?
Oh, no, that, that still keeps us at the adjusted.
Adjusted, okay.
Total, that's correct. That's, yeah, that's a great question. So, but no, this just, this, that's more of a budget number. Or it is a budget number.
Right.
I, I mean, it, it, and my advice will be, you know, we need to kind of wait and see what we have there at the end. After we've gotten through, you know, Atlanta Avenue and see what we have left for, because the balance was for, for sidewalks. And right now, you know, based off of the, the budgeting from last year, you know, there, there wasn't going to be anything extra for, you know, for in addition, you know, for any addition to the sidewalk program. But, you know, there may be a couple of hundred thousand dollars left, but.
Okay. And then just secondly, at the highest of high levels, you mentioned the real property tax revenues. Do they offset the underperformance of the other revenues that you talked about? Parking was one.
Recreation.
I mean, just where we've seen deficits, does the real property tax offset it or neutralize it or bring us up in the positive over and above what, what we budgeted?
It may. Right now, I only show, I mean, I'm, I'm showing that still is remaining flat. I, I still need another 30, 45 days to see how the collections come in. Really, it was the building permit revenue. I mean, that's about an additional $500,000. It's the way we're running today. And then the parking meters were down 500,000. And then, but again, we're still going to be short another, you know, it could be, you know, $500,000 to $700,000 because of the code violations. We also, what I didn't mention, we get a one-time payment of an insurance premium, insurance premium tax. And that was like $150,000 more. So like I said, there are other smaller revenue categories, you know, some that have come in, that have come in stronger than anticipated. But I would not say that, that, that the taxes at this point are making up the difference.
Well, thanks to conservative budgeting and decision-making, you know, small, small surprises stay small and big surprises are manageable and don't turn over the, the boat. So I appreciate that approach.
Couple of questions. Is CARES Act, is that a factor in this at all? And if so, how?
At this point, I've not factored in the CARES funds. That's, and so in terms of that, that revenue number, I've, I've not allotted, have not, I'm not showing that as being part of, or like, you know, going towards like general operating expenses. So when I give my next, you know, when I provide the next CARES update to the city commission, I can, you know, I'll flesh that out a little bit more. But no, so, so no, that the CARES revenue is not part of the number that I've talked about here or the numbers.
Thanks. And then the second question, I know we authorized some fund balance spending earlier this fiscal year for my recollection, which with COVID, my recollection is probably not worth that much. I assume that that's also reflected in terms of the anticipated fund balance and had some reason why that's still where it is?
So that was probably close to seven, between 650 and 700,000. That was allotted from fund balance. And that was for the, the pay adjustments and the clean energy plan. And, and there are a couple of, of equipment purchases. And so that, that will increase, obviously, you know, increase the amount of expenditures, the, the budget for expenditures. But I also think that, like I, like I mentioned, there's so much that's not, that we're not going to be spending, you know? For example, you know, right off the bat, in recreation, there's probably, you know, $60,000 or more of, of instructor fees that, you know, at this point, I don't anticipate being spent. And that's just one example. So, so, I mean, and again, I know when, when I, I took those, took that budget adjustment to the city commission, you were authorizing, you know, additional use of fund balance for that. But that, that may or may not be necessary.
Got it. I did not word my question that well. So basically, your projections do include that anticipated spending?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not worded that well. Well, those are my two questions. Thanks.
Yeah.
Andrea, I'll just, I'm sorry. No, I just have one question. So we've been painting, you know, a pretty good picture. Are there any sort of unforeseen hiccups along the way with revenue collection that could cause us to pause and sort of go back and go, oops? You know, have you factored that into any of our planning for the rest of this year's budget?
Man, I believe I've identified those in terms of the parking fees, the recreation fees, the code violations with court. I mean, the, the, there's, there's one fairly large revenue item. It's over a million dollars and it comes, comes in one payment. And that's the electric franchise from Georgia Power. And I have to say, I, I do not know what impact the pandemic has had on the, you know, the power usage within the city. So obviously, there are office buildings that, you know, have been using less power than more people are at home. So maybe they're using more power. I just don't, I'm, I don't know what that check is going to look like. And so that's, you know, so it's going to be, you know, it will be a couple of months before we know what that is. Um, so that, that was, like I said, I went through every, every, um, revenue category. And, um, you know, that was one that just left me scratching my head. Um, I, I, I couldn't, I, I, I couldn't, you know, make a, an educated guess at this point. Um, that and, um, and if, you know, if there's, um, you know, if there are, you know, additional, you know, business closures, um, or, you know, restrictions on business operations, you know, then that would, I mean, that would result in a, um, you know, in an impact on the budget, but I believe that's something that could be absorbed. It's really something, um, i- if there's something that, you know, unanticipated with the collection rate with the taxes. Because otherwise, the, the tax base, I mean, and, and, um, I've received monthly reports, actually, a few of us here receive monthly reports about real estate sales. And, um, you know, the, the real estate market is, remains very strong, um, in the city. And even when, um, um, you know, last year when we were developing the budget, uh, we were seeing a, a very, very small downturn in terms of home prices, homes or the home sale prices. And, um, and actually it was, it's been during the pandemic that we're seeing the prices creep back up. You know, maybe, you know, one percent, two percent over the last, compared to the last one or two years. Um, totally unexpected. Um, so I anticipate, um, you know, those numbers to remain strong.
Thank you for that.
I had a couple of, um, questions and I, I do, I think I remember that we normally get that, uh, Georgia Power franchise fee. Um, if you look at your power bill, there's a, a franchise fee that we all pay. And then that is given or, or paid back to the, the, the city. And, um, I believe it's maybe February or so, but it, it goes, um, some years it's a little higher than expected and sometimes a little lower than expected. And, um, so, um, the more our residents do in terms of energy conservation, um, then, uh, and it, they, they also talk a lot about it being weather related. So if there's, you know, if we have a really hot summer, then that's going to, um, make it, um, make the franchise fee higher and therefore what we receive back, um, higher. So, um, but, uh, I've been to some of those meetings where they present those checks and, um, you never know exactly, um, what it's going to look like. So I just know I get to the city manager's office as quickly as possible if I'm holding a million dollar check. So, uh, I, I, I did want to ask about the SPOS and the, because our primary, um, commitment with the SPOS funding is to, is for host or to replace the host funds to pay for, um, some of the, the bonds. And I, I didn't know if, um, uh, based on those, uh, we adjusted downward sort of our expectations of what that would be. And so, um, I'm assuming that that, this, that, that amount is staying steady that we are using, um, in place of what we had with host funding. Is that correct?
Um, that's correct. It's about, um, two point two million dollars, um, that replaces host. Um, and that covers the, um, the, the URA debt service. And previously it was two thousand ten, two thousand thirteen debt service, as you recall. Um, you know, that's all been, um, refinanced and those are the twenty twenty, um, twenty twenty A, A and B. Um, A and B, um, debt service. And, um, so that's actually going to be a little bit less. Um, and I'm, I'm looking at my numbers. I only got halfway, halfway through updating those numbers. But it looks like it's probably, I, I see at least a hundred and fifty thousand savings in one category. Um, and so, so we should be close to two hundred thousand dollars in savings right there in terms of what SPOS is going to have to, uh, send over, uh, to those URA funds. Um, so really the, the, the timing couldn't be better, um, in terms of being able to take advantage of that refinancing. And, um, it's a, you know, a little bit less, uh, less, reducing that financial burden on, on SPOS. And again, perhaps allowing us to, um, freeing us up to do, um, you know, yeah, obviously the Atlanta Avenue project, um, you know, plus some more. But again, we'll have a, I'll have a good picture of that, you know, as we go through the budget, budget development.
Great. Okay. Is there anything you want captured in the budget line item? Besides from what we already have here, retain flexibility for many of your budget opportunities?
I'm good with it.
I think the conversation certainly helps us frame what next we're going to be looking at. So thank you.
Yeah. Good, good, good. All right. So I'm going to move us forward and you're going to hate this, but I'm going to begin keeping time on each line item, uh, roughly twelve to fifteen minutes or so per topic, um, to see if we can get through them all. I know some will not take as long and some might take a little bit longer. I'm aware of that. But I'll just give you a time check anyway. Okay?
Wait, Kelly, how, how many minutes?
Twelve to fifteen.
Okay. All right.
Did I say that right? Yeah.
Lisa, I'll defer my time to you.
Thank you. We may not need it.
All right. Affordable housing. Go for it.
All right. So I will just jump right in. Uh, I would love to see us fulfill a, at least one, if not more than one of the task force recommendations, the Affordable Housing Task Force recommendations each year. Um, I kind of polled some members of the community to find out what some of their ideas of what the top priorities from the task force would be. And some of the feedback that I received was, uh, to, one, develop a plan for the use of the funds in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Two, potentially provide some sort of security deposit assistance for individuals who are looking to rent here in the city of Decatur, but may not have the first and last month, uh, in, you know, liquid funds to be able to put that down. Uh, the third, uh, which I know has been discussed amongst us all at some point before is, uh, an amendment to the UDO to permit multi-unit developments where single-family housing is only permitted at the time. And then the fourth, which may be a little bit more challenging in this financial climate, is tax incentives to help keep affordable housing units. So providing some sort of tax incentive for individuals who own, uh, non-owner occupied properties here in the city of Decatur to, in, uh, to encourage them to maintain affordability of those units. So those would be privately owned units or, uh, something, something to that nature. So I'd like to use those four things to kind of brainstorm what we would want our twenty twenty-one goal for affordable housing to be.
And would it be helpful? Yeah. Would it be helpful to hear what our housing fellow and Angela are, are working on right now?
I would love to hear what you're working on right now.
All right. So as we take a look at the task force report, there are twenty-three recommendations. And some of the ones that have been completed, I know we talked about a couple yesterday. Um, we do have a dedicated staff member that was one of the recommendations and that being the Affordable Housing Fellowship. It is a two-year fellowship. Um, and then we can reevaluate, you know, where we are and if we want to continue that or, you know, change up the position, but at least we have that, um, completed for, for now. There's another recommendation about how to take our, um, MLK Service Project Weekend and kind of turn it into something that we can do throughout the year. But of course, you know, funding for that sort of program, uh, is limited at this time. And so that is, uh, the, the, the one project that we are working on is with the Atlanta Regional Commission. We were able to secure a CEDAP grant from them to help us, uh, evaluate what this program would look like and where the funding sources, um, could be for that. So that is underway. Um, the next, of course, is the mandatory inclusionary housing ordinance, which is complete. Um, we are starting to look into the housing opportunity bond recommendation. And this is, um, you know, a, a bond that is, uh, you know, taken on by the city commission. Um, and the task force has, uh, recommended in their report, um, a bond of five million dollars, um, to, to help us kind of kick off different, um, you know, elements of this task force report and help fund other, um, recommendations within, within the report. Um, the next is that, you know, how to fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, um, with the mandatory inclusionary housing ordinance, that, uh, in lieu payment. So if a developer, uh, does not want to construct, uh, affordable units on site, they do have an opportunity to, uh, do an in lieu payment. And those funds, that payment would go into the Housing Trust Fund. But I do hear you, Commissioner Meyer, is like, you know, how are we, you know, once we get those, um, funds, how are we going to use them? What is it going to go towards? So I, I like that. It's almost like part B, um, to, to, um, that recommendation. And then, of course, the, the other recommendation that's here is to revise the S four homestead exemption. And we, I, I believe that the city commission, um, heard an update and passed a resolution at your last city commission as it relates to that, um, S four homestead exemption. Um, the, the next is the rental assistance program. And that is a program that we have been studying since the beginning of the pandemic. There are a couple of the task force members and staff that have been conducting informal interviews with a few of the owners of our various apartment complexes, um, that, those that are naturally occurring affordable housing. And, um, so we, we continue to check in with them. Right now, there is not necessarily a need for, um, an, uh, rental assistance program. However, you know, the other part of that is those that want to live here. Um, as you mentioned, Commissioner Meyer, you know, the, um, the, the security deposit or that first month's rent, you know, some sort of assistance that helps, um, bring those, uh, folks who want to live here into the city. The next is the accessory dwelling unit finance program, looking at how we could potentially, uh, start, uh, an accessory dwelling unit program that, uh, helps, um, property owners, uh, find the financial ground to actually construct a unit. Uh, it's, it's hard for single-family residential, you know, property owners to go to a bank and seek a construction loan for an accessory dwelling unit. Um, and, and a lot of homeowners don't have, you know, a hundred thousand dollars sitting in their pocket to construct an accessory dwelling unit. And so looking at some sort of finance program, um, is one of those recommendations. And if, if we were to create a finance program as such, you know, one of the requirements would be is, you know, that accessory dwelling unit would need to be kept affordable, um, to a certain level of income for the life of that loan or, or, or the life of, you know, you know, the financial assistance that we would be providing. Um, of course, the next recommendation that is on the list is the impact fees and that is underway. Um, the next is, the next recommendation is the TIF bonds, which is tax increment finance bonds. Those are issued in tax allocation districts, the TAD districts. The city of Decatur has one TAD district, which is the East Decatur Station area around the Abinale Marta Station. And we are looking at expanding and maybe, uh, having a, a second TAD, uh, within the city of Decatur. And we are looking at, uh, doing a, a, a study on that and being able to present that to you, um, once the study is complete for further consideration. But, um, again, i- if we create a TAD, there are opportunities to, to tap into tax increment finance bonds, uh, to assist developers in building more affordable housing as part of their projects. Um, and so that is, that is where we are in kind of the work that's being done behind the scenes. Um, but I, I have definitely put a, put a, a star by the, by the recommendations that Commissioner Meyer just brought up, um, you know, with the, the duplexes and triplexes and possibly, uh, quadplexes in our traditional single-family residential districts as well as the others.
So that's all very encouraging. I'm sure you all know me well enough to know now that I'm not going to let that go just yet. So it sounds like there's a whole lot of research and looking into and studying. But what are we actually going to implement in twenty twenty-one? What are we going to actually do? And let's put it, let's put a, a target date on when we're going to have it completed by because I, I am not willing to let twenty twenty-one just be a year of research and insight gathering. Um, I think, I think there's something actionable in this list of things that are being researched that we can complete this year. And I, I really would like to rely on you, Angela, and our affordable housing fellow to drive that decision because you've already been in the process of researching. But it doesn't sound like we've selected something with the timeline to be completed by twenty twenty-one. And I think that's essential.
Well, what I will say is that we are planning on having a work session with the city commission. Um, you know, as early as February, we'll, we'll try to get on your calendar. I'm not quite sure what your February schedule is looking like. Um, but, you know, to, to look at things such as the housing opportunity bond, the tax allocation district, um, the, uh, even the Decatur Land Trust. I mean, these are some, some bigger topics and it requires, uh, funding. And, um, and yes, it, these do require research and studies. And, um, because we want to make sure that we, when we go to implement this, um, that we are being thoughtful and looking at, you know, from all different angles to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible, um, as well as, you know, making sure that we're fitting within the context of our, of our growth plan, our strategic plan. Um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm open, um, you know, if, if something is, is pointing out to the city commission as, as, you know, what we really need to focus on, um, then I'm all ears.
So can you explain to me what the S four homestead exemption actually means in layman's terms?
What is that? Yeah, that's the, that's the school exemption that was before you. Um, I, I think the chair of the City Schools of Decatur was before you at your meeting, your last meeting.
Okay. So that's the one that's, that's directed toward seniors?
Yes.
And we don't have anything on the list that's directed toward the current owners of privately owned multi-unit properties here in the city of Decatur, do we?
At this moment, not. That's one of the recommendations, um, that, that we are looking into. Uh, you know, we were looking at a way for the Decatur Development Authority to perhaps provide some sort of tax abatement. But, uh, because we can't, the, the charge or the mission of the development authority is, um, you know, commerce and economic development and jobs. And we couldn't quite marry the two, um, you know, in terms of fitting it within the, the development authority's mission. Uh, so, you know, when we look at the housing opportunity bond, uh, and, and what the task force is recommending is a five million dollar bond, um, perhaps that bond could be used for the naturally occurring affordable housing and working with those property owners to keep those affordable.
But that would not happen this year, correct?
I'm going to look at the city manager. Like, is that even possible?
I mean, we need to have more discussion about when we talk about issuing bonds. I mean, we issue bonds, I mean, unless I, I hear otherwise, I mean, that's, you know, bonds are backed by, I mean, they're paid back by, um, city property owners. And, you know, unless there's some other, um, you know, formula, you know, related to, um, you know, you know, the way the, the bond issue is structured, um, and I'd be cautious, you know, about recommending, um, at this point, making a recommendation to the city commission to issue bonds. Because that, I mean, that would, I mean, that, I mean, what we're, you would be talking about increasing taxes to pay back, to make the payments back on those bonds. to pay back, to make the payments back on those bonds.
Right, and that's exactly my point. And so I would like to not have a discussion right now about things that we know we can't do right now. I'd like to just, you know, not muddy the conversation with items that we already know are not things that we can just implement in a year. I'd really like to focus on anything on that task force report that we, within our capacities, can implement this year. It gets really confusing, especially, I, I mean, it gets confusing for me and I think it gets confusing for members of the community when we talk about, you know, things that are, that include bonds and that include, you know, multi-year plans, when we are really working to target the low hanging fruit here. So if we could just scratch that from the conversation and really just talk about whether it's amendments to our UDO that we could implement this year or if there are funds in that Housing Trust Fund now that can be allocated toward obtaining an affordably, uh, uh, you know, a naturally occurring affordable unit or something like that, I'd like to use the remainder of my 18 minutes to talk about that.
Well, um, and, and Angela, you know, feel free to, to, to jump in here, but what I, what I have heard from, what I hear from Angela is, um, is a combination of trying to, um, address, you know, the low hanging fruit or kind of those, you know, the, the early wins, things that, that are tangible, people can see in this year. But we also, I mean, I think we've, we, we fully have the, you know, the ability and the responsibility to do the research, um, you know, the research, the analyses, um, in some cases, um, you know, working with outside consultants, um, for, uh, you know, for their expertise for these projects that, um, you know, that are more complex, um, you know, will take longer to get off the ground. But really, they do have the potential of having, um, you know, deep and long lasting, you know, positive impacts on the community. So I think we do need to make sure that we're striking that balance, um, between, you know, the, uh, you know, the earth, the early tangible wins and those things that just, um, are complicated or going to take time. But we're also not going to step, we're not going to step away from those.
Agreed, and, and please keep doing that. That's, that's not at all what I'm implying. What I, what I'm trying to get to is the one actionable task, just like mandatory inclusionary housing last year, that we are going to put on this list as something that we are going to accomplish in 2021. And I am just not comfortable with us putting multiple studies as our tasks for 2021. I think we can find something actionable for this year while we maintain our research and our studies for the longer term projects.
Head up in for a moment? Sure, I, I think, and what I would say is we did accomplish, I think, two things in the first year. So just want to acknowledge that. And, you know, just with what Lisa's speaking about and then trying to figure out, we, we'd had a conversation about the UDO in regard to parking. And, um, Ms. Reddell mentioned that we had to go, would go back and look at some amendments to the UDA. I don't know if there's some timeframe or that or what the scope of it is. It's just, that'd be my one question in terms of, you know, as, uh, we've said a number of times, you create something, you go back, you look at things you change to kind of update it and address to reality. Um, and the second thing is I'm actually really curious about the ARC CDAP grant to expand MLK Weekend and the timeline for that. So I guess my, my question is kind of more, do we have a sense of the UDO timeline and the, um, ARC CDAP grant, um, in terms of the MLK Weekend and a potential opportunity to, for that sometime this calendar year?
So yes, the, the C DAP grant that we're working on with the ARC, um, should be completed within the next few months. And I anticipate that Eileen De La Torre, who's our city planner, that she will be bringing forth that, that, you know, final, um, recommendation that comes out of that C DAP, you know, program, that study, um, to the city commission. I, I would say by the end of quarter two.
Okay, and so there may be some stuff that could be implementable in terms of making investments in MLK Weekend this calendar year. Okay. And then what's, what, and just broadly, I, I think we talked about the UDO three hour, throughout the day in some way, shape or form, but is there an intent to, at some point in time, kind of make some, I'd say, not, not an overhaul, but, you know, address some issues we can get addressed in the UDO?
Yeah, so there, there are a couple of recommendations that are within the task force report. Um, you know, one of those being what we just mentioned is that duplex, triplex, quadplex within the traditional, uh, single family zone districts. Um, the other are some tweaks within the RS seventeen zoning district, uh, related to townhomes. Um, so when we think about the, the UDO updates and, and, and trying to, you know, make those updates this year, you know, if that is something that the city commission really wants to see completed this calendar year as part of your work plan, um, you know, I, I think the, you know, planning and zoning staff, you know, we will definitely work towards completing that if that's something that you'd like to see.
And I wouldn't want to rush it. I mean, if we can show, I think that, um, Commissioner Meyer wants to show some momentum and perhaps MLK Weekend can show that, you know, to this year, sorry, to last year, or to this year. You know, one this year and then perhaps line the groundwork. I, I, I would think that, I mean, I, I don't want to do some UDO changes this year and then have to go to some UDO changes next year. Um, and so I, 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 again, as Commissioner Meyer is looking to you guys' expertise in the housing perspective, I look to expertise in terms of, you know, in addition to this stuff and the parking space sizes, I mean, is there some tightening up effort that you, you have in, in your, the back of your mind or front of your mind or anywhere in your mind, um, in terms of, uh, updating UDO?
I mean, we, we have, um, you know, kind of an unwritten running list of, of things that we have noticed as, as developments have come along that, you know, we would, whenever we open up kind of the, the UDO to make amendments and we're working within a particular article of the UDO, uh, we will, you know, we'll look at that list and think, okay, this is the time that we can, um, make that amendment, uh, and bring that forth to the city commission.
Thanks.
Okay, I, I want to, um, go back to see, have we clearly defined if there is something to be accomplished in 2021, um, concretely around affordable housing? Or did I hear that there's a work session planned for February? That could be when you present what could be accomplished in 2021, based upon this conversation?
Commissioner Walsh maybe had a, a question or comment? If we could do that quickly, I know we're.
Yes. I don't want to take us back any steps. Um, if the work session would be a path to prioritizing, uh, a lot of what the staff is currently working on, I think that could be very beneficial. We're still early enough in the year to nail a couple of things down that we want to happen insofar as it's possible, um, in this calendar year. You know, inclusionary zoning was the product, that was the product of a couple of years of work, um, not just by staff, but by, uh, bringing the community together to understand what that could mean and getting that coalescence of, um, desire and understanding. So, um, I'd be willing to say that if the work session was set up that way, that we could, and if we all did the work before, leading up to that too, as individuals, to be ready to make decisions, um, that night, so we're prioritized coming out of it, that could be useful. Um, I just wanted to raise our eyes up above the fold a little bit, you know, Angela and everybody. I don't know, we've got the 23 recommendations, um, they are prioritized already with A and B. And, um, I, I, then in that sense, I'd like to stay up in A insofar as it's possible and get the high prioritized ones, um, pushed up to the top. And that does include a couple of UDO updates and zoning. And I think we're all saying that those are, um, the most, to me, they're the most reachable, high impact and low cost, if you will, meaning, um, I think we're very close to making those decisions on the zoning updates. And at the bottom of the list of A, high priorities is community education. And I do not want to ignore the importance of that for putting it side by side with all the things we're considering so that we don't, um, get out ahead of the community or fall behind. You know, Commissioner Meyer's hearing very insightful, specific recommendations from constituents. We, uh, we know that they, uh, our, our residents have opinions about, about priorities and are, have a deeper understanding than ever before about affordable housing and our need for it and how we can get there. So, um, th- that's what I'd like to say. I think there's a couple of things from A that are related to zoning that I think we could get done ideally this year. I think we could come out of a work session in February together with priorities. And I want community education to be, uh, a discussion point and part and parcel with, with everything we're going to do this year.
All right, so I think I'm hearing that the, the R seventeen zoning and then the, um, the allowing, the like duplex, triplex, quadplexes and the single family areas, that's what, um, is that the desire to, to incorporate those two recommendations into the work plan?
I think so. I, I would like, I would like to see those incorporated into the work plan and I would like to see those, um, incorporated with a target date.
And it was R seventeen zoning and what else? Oops.
Um, I, I mean, it's listed as duplex, triplex, quadplex, I'm trying to find the, find it in the plan, but allowing, it's a, basically kind of a, you know, um, you know, multifamily, um, you know, mix within single family neighborhoods.
And community education.
Yes, absolutely.
I also, just as Kelly is typing that, want to say that our strategic plan has offered some of that, um, community education piece when we, um, looked at the, uh, the housing and have engaged residents in, um, uh, as part of the strategic plan with affordable housing, the, the speakers, uh, and the panel were really experts in the various areas of, um, what it takes to get affordable housing, some of the, the, um, challenges as well as opportunities. So I think that, that is something, um, that has happened and that will hopefully continue to happen as part of the strategic plan. So I think that community education piece is certainly, um, uh, happening now and will hopefully continue in, um, in quarter one and build on that, uh, throughout the rest of the year. So just wanted to make that, that, um, comment.
Good, good.
Kelly, can I just add one thing? If we could get an update when we have our work session on the cottage court that, you know, sort of has been in the works. I think it'll land a little bit of insight as to how some of these really complex issues take a lot of time to bear fruit, but just the conversation on the cottage court when we have our work session, I don't want to take up that time here.
Great.
Thank you, and if I can just add specifically to Angela, I am incredibly grateful for all the work that was done last year for mandatory inclusionary housing. And I know with everything else that was going on, um, in 2020, that making that a priority and actually getting that done was a challenge. I'm incredibly grateful to you and your team for doing that. And I know these conversations, especially with me, can be intense because I'm so passionate about this. But I have the utmost respect, admiration and appreciation for what y'all do. And I know it's tough and I'm just, I'm trying to be a good accountability partner. I may push, but, but I, but I appreciate you so much.
Thank you for those comments. And, um, just really quickly, Commissioner Meyer, I wanted to make sure that we are capturing you, this, our conversation and this priority list. And so I see the work session is planned for February. But should the RS seventeen zoning and the duplex, triplex and quadplex, should that be a separate line item?
Yes, yes. And, and I, I would, I would turn to you to say which quarter of the year you would think that, you know, the research, the draft, the, all of the processes that you have to go through to make those amendments would take Q three, Q four, whenever that is. I would, I would turn to you to.
Yeah.
Give that.
I mean, it, you know, for something this big, I would say quarter one through quarter four because the community education does take, um, some time. Education does something like this before you all.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I have that correct, it's the work session in February to present, um, and prioritize what can be accomplished, that's still necessary. And then I'm hearing having another work session, is that what you were saying specifically? No, okay, clarify.
So, um, maybe under that first line where it says work session planned for February to present and prioritize what can be accomplished in 2021, including an update on the cottage court project.
Okay, great.
And, and then that second one, I, I don't believe that we're looking at just a work session to discuss the RS seventeen zoning, et cetera. Um, I, I think it is, you know, what I'm hearing is, you know, amendments, um, like text amendments to the RS seventeen zoning, et cetera.
But to your point, Angela, those are, those are changes that need to be, um, worked on in concert with community education as a process, as a synchronized process. And I think we've seen a great template in Atlanta recently too, with efforts by their planning department and organizations. So maybe we can, um, take some ideas from that too.
Yeah, I, I think for this particular one, Minneapolis has kind of led the way, uh, with, you know, changing these zoning codes, they've, they've, they've done a good job. Um, and, and then, of course, they've done a lot of, um, kind of outreach to, to folks like me about, you know, the pros and cons. So I would probably look a little bit more to Minneapolis.
Great.
Good, okay.
Okay.
Hey, it's gonna be a long day, people.
I think that was the hardest.
Your meetings.
Should be smooth sailing after that.
All right, it's always like, no, no.
Hang on, not so fast.
Well, it feels like it was, um, a, a powerful conversation. And of course, as always, Commissioner Meyer, your passion does come through and, um, and I appreciate seeing the partnership that you all have to work through the details. And I'm happy that we have the opportunity for everyone just to put it on the table about what we're passionate about and, um, the desires to get things tangibly accomplished. So, yeah, and the time it takes, whoo, my head goes off to you people. All right, capital projects and prioritization. What is this about? So one of the things that I listed was, um, Ebster Field. And I put question marks here to get clarity from you all as to if this is how you would like it, um, captured. From 2020, we talked about consider Ebster athletic facility improvements from the 2021 budget. And there was also something there about meet with housing authority to discuss impact field and lighting, which I think might have taken place. So beyond this, the floor is open for you all to conversate about it.
I think just in terms of, um, Ebster, maybe the, how, meet with the housing authority to discuss the impact would, um, maybe be listed first and then, um, because that's going to kind of drive that, uh, conversation. And maybe if we could have that, um, to happen during Q one, if that's possible, Mr. Saxon?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that's a, that's a fairly, I mean, that's, uh, that really, but only, to me, would only, uh, involve, uh, discussion of the lighting.
Right, right. Exactly. Yeah, the lighting, so impact of lighting, because the field is, the field is already there, so, yeah. And then, um, I did wonder, uh, we had some, um, sidewalk, um, plans that were, um, not fulfilled this year. I believe on Dairy Down and some other areas, uh, we pulled those out. And I didn't know if that is something that is, um, Mr. Younger, that we, um, are considering as part of a capital project expenditure for this year. Um, I know we, we, we did get some of the sidewalks done and, uh, but I'd just like kind of an update on where we are with, um, sidewalks to Tally Street.
Sure. Uh, we continue to work on the project, Jennings.
We continue to work on the project. Jennings is leading those efforts along with working with Mickey with AECOM. We're working on obtaining the multi-use trail easements from three different property owners. We're having some difficulty with one of the property owners. They're they're all just temporary construction easements. It was complicated by potential real estate transactions. So we're still working through those. Shadowmore and
David, will you remind us how far this part of the trail, what's been funded, how far that goes?
Sure, it's going to pick up at the City Schools of Decatur property where we stopped our trail project, and it's going to carry to the first northernmost driveway of Legacy Park. It's gonna go through the intersection at Dairy Down across the the properties where there's two of those four-square duplexes. And then it's going to transition through the front yard of the the house that we own that's on legacy property and tie into that driveway and sidewalk.
And do you anticipate for the next fiscal year extending that all the way down to Katy Kerr?
I would absolutely love to entertain that. Yes.
So that's our plan, but we'll get we'll work on pricing and see how that fits with our budget priorities.
And that should be, I mean, it's not going to be inexpensive. I mean, anytime you talk about a 10-foot-wide trail, I mean, it's a sizable, you know, project. The great thing is topography and obviously land ownership is is all City of Decatur. So in the scheme of things, it's a relatively simple project with, I would anticipate, very minimal design efforts. There may be some transitions across the main drive, you know, main entrance driveway that we want to work through, kind of more aesthetically. But from a level of complexity, it should be relatively low and and something that a variety of our general contractors that we've worked with before could come in and build pretty pretty good easily.
So do we anticipate that that multi-use trail being completed in 2021?
We are going to work, I mean, as you all have heard over and over, and I hate hate the fact that I'm delivering the message, but, you know, obtaining these easements is by far way more complicated than sometimes I wish it, you know, was. But we hope to get that section completed from the schools to the first driveway this fiscal year. So that would be by the end of June is the the goal that I have expressed with AECOM and and Mr. Bell.
Okay, thank you. What about the Dairy Down sidewalks? I believe that that was in the that we that was a proposed sidewalk on Dairy Down that we moved out of this year's budget.
Absolutely. So getting the Shadowmore sidewalk and Hilldale sidewalk, it would be our plan to get those built. Let me see here. We're working through developing the technical design for the Shadowmore-Hilldale sidewalk, possibly some additional public outreach. We have met with every single property owner along the stretch that we're talking about constructing, that first block, as well as turning the corner onto Hilldale to connect to Winona Drive. I feel that we've had extremely supportive conversations with those residents. Don't anticipate at this point any surprises. I always anticipate that being the more difficult component. And so we need to get that one built. And Dairy Down would definitely be that was going to be our next project. And then, you know, moving forward, question would be how far how how much farther down Shadowmore do you want to go? And then Garden Lane was a lot more complicated of a sidewalk request with a lot more technical issues that would need to be resolved in order to move that project forward. And I believe there's some additional potential sidewalk petitions that may be forthcoming from neighbor individual neighborhoods. But Dairy Down Dairy Down would definitely be high on the the list in terms of moving forward. I believe we've also, we've picked the side of the street that the sidewalk would go on. There would be some technical design that would need to take place as it relates to connectivity and topography.
Then is that a line item that we're going to perform sidewalk improvements?
We are going to provide, we are going to be doing sidewalk improvements.
I think Mayor Protown Powers and Commissioner Duzenberry both have hands up. So I don't know if you can see them. So, all right.
So this question is for Ms. Arnold, and this sort of ties back to the first sort of comment I made about budget flexibility. So what I notice is we get a lot of these requests, and we often defer them for a cycle or two. You know, I know that, you know, sidewalk improvements, which to me, go back to a lot of the things I hear, you know, we get these pop-up requests, and we are, in many cases, unable to capitalize on them when the requests come through. Do we see any opportunity for some flexibility to, you know, take some of this low-hanging fruit, you know, i.e. for mobility and accessibility and walkability, to be able to implement them a lot faster than a normal cycle going forward? If that makes sense?
Um, I guess I'll, I mean, David and I can talk. I don't know what would I mean, there's still a problem. There's still the the process that, and once it gets approved, say, for example, even, you know, Dairy Down, you know, we've, you know, we've done some work, we've determined which side of the road is going to go on, but then there's still the, you know, the engineering that's involved. You know, and David mentioned, you know, in some of these cases, just, I mean, just getting construction easements is a tedious, you know, process. So I would be really cautious about saying, you know, we can somehow expedite projects. Even when we're, you know, we're working with outside consultants, you know, on the design, the engineering, the design, and then ultimately the construction. I mean, and then, of course, there's the, we want to be you know, we want to be deliberate with the community involvement process as well. Man, I don't know how many, how many site visits, you know, David and Jennings, you know, have done, you know, visiting, you know, every household, you know, along Shadowmore, that's, you know, that's going to be impacted by the sidewalks. So it's, um, it's just, it's a lot of work to be done. And we're, you know, we're, you know, we're, I think we are going to try to be as efficient as possible. But I mean, I guess, I mean, if if there is a project that, you know, that you're that you're concerned, you know, has been, you know, neglected or, you know, put on the back burner, you know, let's, you know, let's talk about that. You know, we can talk about that offline, but we definitely, we know, you know, we made a commitment to Dairy Down. I mean, and that was even during the annexation process, you know, of bringing those properties into the city where that that finally that afforded us the opportunity to finally, you know, have, you know, have all of those properties within the city limits so that we could then put in the sidewalk. But we already had some in the queue in front. And, you know, and then obviously, South Columbia and the the you know, construction of the the new school, you know, created, I would say, that it had to change in priorities because we, you know, we we had to get that that sidewalk in for for the students.
Which, you know, that's sort of why I was leading with that. And that's something we can talk about in the communication plan, because, you know, there have been these threads out there where, you know, well, the city knew the school was coming. What took so long for the sidewalk to happen? And I think that's part of, you know, if we get down into talk about communication strategy, those things are very helpful to people in the community. So thank you.
George, I know you had something.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as part of the Atlanta Avenue project, I might spoken with Mr. Saxon about also replacing the the planters with strategically placed tree wells and traffic calming on a dare. And I don't know if that's a separate conversation or not. It is something that I would like to continue to push for. And perhaps Mr. Saxon can give an update in terms of where we are with exploring the the replacing planters with some sort of tree well and and traffic calming on a dare.
We were, I mean, that's part of the overall planning for that project. We're, I mean, I think there will be some budget issues that we have to resolve, but
That's why I was bringing it up under capital projects.
Yeah, and the, well, we've got money, you know, we have money for the Atlanta Avenue Railroad crossing. And, you know, just how far that money goes, we will find out. But as part of the plan, I think we, and I don't know whether you were able to attend the virtual workshop before Christmas, but part of that explored several options for the Howard Avenue, converting what's what's on Howard Avenue to a more permanent, you know, approach. And again, I think we would all like to resolve that. And again, it's just, it'll be a budget issue, and hopefully, we'll have enough money in the Atlanta Avenue budget to certainly make a start on it. I mean, it's it's something we, I think, we as a staff and as a planning team would like to make permanent.
Yeah. And I appreciate that, Mr. Jackson, just I, as we're doing that, I mean, there there can be cost-effective ways that would allow us to move partially forward with implementation while getting rid of the planters that would still, I think, affect, you know, do the accomplish a traffic calming goals while perhaps having a phase two to perhaps put in some more infrastructure. So just wanted to put a shout out for that. And then also just reiterate the importance of engaging the folks over there in terms of traffic calming opportunities that would tie in with the Atlanta Avenue project. And I I I know that they may not be implemented immediately. It could be something similar to Parkwood, but just having that conversation. So, thanks.
But but again, we had that was a part of the workshop. Yeah, so
I wanted to have that conversation here, too. So I do appreciate that. Yes.
Yeah, no, that's part of our work plan for this. And again, it'll be, we hopefully will have you know, a proposal actually before you either late this quarter, early in the next quarter, Q one or Q two. And it will include recommendations for all of those, all those issues.
And thank you for meeting me onsite and walking me through all of this.
Yes, sir.
Kelly, could we put that maybe under capital projects is the Atlanta Avenue crossing and, I guess, additional traffic calming infrastructure?
And just to, just since we're talking about capital projects, and we could maybe look at this earlier, I just want to make sure everybody knows that the Commerce Drive Cycle Track will take, will start this year. It, we completed, and this is similar to what David, that we had to obtain sixty-five temporary construction easements, and we completed that. We, this is probably a six to six and a quarter million-dollar project about
Do you mean church?
Beg your pardon?
Church?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, you said commerce. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Well, it'll start on Commerce, Claremont Commerce.
Right. It's gonna make the turn. Yep.
It starts at where the Commerce Drive Cycle Track ends and will extend that all the way to the city limits near Metallock Road. And again, that will be under construction sometime this calendar year and should take about eighteen months.
Mr. Saxon, if people want to see that design, they, where can they see that on our website?
There's a, there's a rendering of it on our website.
So that's, our website is fast. Can you bring people a little?
I can, sure. I can, again, it's, I'll send a link or we can post a link or
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to clarify to make sure that I understand. Are you saying that the Atlanta Avenue Crossing and the infrastructure for traffic calming to be complete, or are we working on it?
That's a plan. That's the planning process. Hopefully, we'll be complete. And then we will probably looking at this time next year to start construction. We're dealing with some partners, some stakeholders that have strong views, the Department of Transportation and CSX. So we've got to we got to get their agreement. Yeah. But I think we're in pretty good shape. Again, I feel like we've made some real progress. It was delayed, you know, I mean, again, the pandemic pretty much pushed us back on that. I'd rather be further along, but I think we've are have got some momentum now. Again, hopefully, we continue that. And this time next year, I'll be saying hopefully, we're starting construction.
Great. And so then my other question was the Dairy Down improvements. When do we expect those to be complete?
Yeah, I don't think those will be, I think we're gonna, we're, there are some other projects ahead of those. So I think complete sidewalk improvements, I guess, for Hilldale and Shadowmore, is that correct?
The Dairy Down, that's just going to be in the budget, you know, July, starting July one, 2021. That would be the goal.
Before we wrap up, can we circle back to fields? Hugh?
I'm sorry, I'm just going to pause. You're just want to make sure that I'm capturing what you all intend to be on this document. Do you want all of those sidewalk improvements listed, or are we just needing to reference Dairy Down?
I think if you want to put include sidewalk improvements for Dairy Down as part of budget.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. Given that we discussed yesterday that Ebster Field may not be able to be completed until 2022, and it seems to me we have two other zones or fields that are underutilized or not utilized at all, which for now is the Boys and Girls Club Field and Fields at Legacy Park. Are there any more nominal investments we can make to improve those areas and be able to offer them up or more regularly to the community?
Well, the the field at the Boys and Girls Club is actually in reasonable condition. It's, it's something we have used for years. And that, again, it's a, it's a natural grass field, so
I don't want to terrify it. No, I'm just so, if it's in great shape and it can be, you know, I know it's got some usage right now, maybe some legacy usage from other groups, but then moving over to Legacy Park, I know there's some opportunity there, too.
Right. So the so again, well, Legacy Park is, you know, again, I, we originally allocated a significant amount of money to improve the field at Legacy as part of the original bond funding for that. And when the track became, you know, an important proposed improvement, we sort of delayed that because any money we invested in this in improving the field, the current fields would be lost. So and again, I think we have multiple, a number of improvements at Legacy that improvements at Legacy that we probably should consider. And I think there was something, I can't see the entire list, but I think Legacy was part of the the earlier list, like, for instance, the pond.
Yeah.
That will, you know, we, we can talk about that later, but again, that's, there's a limited pot of money, and it's kind of a priority issue. And again, I, I love fields. I love to build fields. Love to build.
I wasn't talking about major, you know, we're talking semi-permanent. Again, what is the good before the great that keeps our community active and healthy and using what we own and have? So I just want to make sure we're keeping top of mind that we have these green spaces. They should be deployed, and they should be in the best shape possible within, you know, financial, reasonable financial investment. And of course, the track is going to happen, but I think if that's going to still be a few years out, we can have people taking advantage of that green space in different ways. So I want to think creatively. I don't want to take our eyes off of it, and I don't want to have three, three green zones that are in, you know, less than ideal conditions for, for usage.
Yes, ma'am.
Spoken, the good before the great. There's a good quote for the day. All right, anything else to capture here?
You know, and just a reminder, when we come back to the, the commission, and, well, we, you know, we'll present the budget in May or provide the budget, you know, in May. I mean, there'll be a much more extensive capital program. Obviously, not everything is going to be listed here, but this is very helpful, you know, to hear, you know, to hear the priorities and, you know, and just to hear those have, have to haves. And, but again, there'll be a much more, there's a much more extensive capital program, and we have a, you know, you know, we develop a 10-year, a staff, we develop a 10-year capital budget, and then the five years of that are communicated within the budget document. So, yeah, so this, I, I get, I, I believe we will be able to, you know, to include everything we've heard here and, and more.
So I want to pause this for a sec. It's 10:30, and I want to give everybody an opportunity to take a stretch break, and I'm going to make it short. Can you do it in 10 minutes?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.